Okay, it is 6:15. We will call this board meeting to order if you'll please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Dr. Dave Bardo.
Here.
Bobby Brown. Jill Maddick Nelson.
Here.
Kristen Matt Miller.
Here.
Andy Mary. Danny Pyatt.
Here.
Angie Schreiber.
Here.
Katie Schrader. Catherine Solan.
Here.
I will say that Bobby Brown reached out to me today and said that she was not going to be here due to some surgery for one of her children today. She's staying home to take care of her baby girl. Item number two, citizens and delegation student representatives report. Lucy, you're flying solo again.
I never know where to put the microphone. So first, I'm going to talk about academics. I don't know why I announce the outline every time. Like, you guys don't know the outline, but... So first, I wanted to talk about virtual classes. There are two current virtual classes that I know of. All Senior English is online through WVS and Geometry is online through WVS. And I just wanted to give you an update on how that was going. I think it's working fairly okay. It's a little rocky at times just because it's hard to communicate with teachers through email and through like the WVS system. But, I mean, we made it work and it's going all right. And then Spanish IV is going to be online next semester just due to teaching staff. So I'm in Spanish IV. I'll let you guys know how it's going. The junior class is preparing for their ACT, which is quickly approaching on March 19th. And the 9th and 10th grade will also be taking the pre-ACT on this day. Field trips. The Unified FIED class had the privilege of visiting the trampoline park in Appleton. This trip was organized by Maggie Boginsky, who is a student at AHS. She had communicated with local businesses and successfully encouraged them to donate to fund the entire trip. So we just wanted to put that in there as an example of a student doing something really cool at school. And they had a really fun time. There was... The pictures, I don't know. Can you guys... Oh, they're right there, yeah. Yeah. And it was a really awesome time. And then, special events. This Friday is the Boys and Girls Basketball Double Header versus Rhinelander at home. This game will also feature the retirement of Jordan Mox's jersey. And the Special Education Unified Basketball game will be at one of the half times. But more importantly, all of the proceeds from the game will be going to a very prominent and involved family in our community, the Matt Millers, in support of continued cancer treatment for their two-year-old son Walter. So you guys obviously know Mrs. Matt Miller. And it would just be great if we could get a lot of people at the game. Sorry, I'm just like this. Sports and clubs. There is a Girls' Varsity Gymnastics Invitational at home tomorrow at the high school. There's a Girls' Varsity Basketball Game at home tomorrow at the middle school. And then there's a Boys' Varsity Hockey Game at home at the Langley County Multipurpose on Thursday. And a Boys' Varsity Wrestling Quad at Thursday at home at the high school. So that's all I really have today. Do you guys have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lucy.
Thank you.
Letter B is recognition. We have some folks that we would like to recognize tonight, and I'll turn it over to Mrs. Ogensky.
Tonight, we would like to recognize the following crossing guard. When we call your name, please come forward. Ed, and I hope I pronounce this correctly, Brahm, Robert Frisch, Diana Helser, and Dwayne Packard. Please come forward and receive your certificate, and we'll get a photograph of you also with Board President Mr. Pyatt. On behalf of the Unified School District of Anago, I want to express my deepest gratitude for the incredible work each of you do as a crossing guard in our community. Your dedication and commitment to ensuring the safety of our students on their way to and from school does not go unnoticed. Rain or shine, hot or cold, you're always there with a smile helping our students cross the streets safely. It's not just about stopping traffic or holding a stop sign. It's about the positive impact you make on the lives of our students. You serve as a role model, teaching them valuable lessons about responsibility, respect, and the importance of looking out for one another. The kindness and patience you exhibit daily does not go unnoticed. Your friendly demeanor and willingness to go above and beyond make our community a better and safer place for everyone. Thank you for your invaluable service.
Thank you.
So Diana has served, I think, three years? Three years, third year, third winter. What a way to remember, third winter. Okay, all right. And then Dwayne is on his 10th year, so thank you so much. When I'm out driving in the morning, I'm waving at him on Bellagoo, so thank you so much. Public comment. Do we have anybody that signed up? I don't think I see anybody. Moving on to item three, consent agenda. Letter A, approval of agenda, minutes, and financial reports, report of district retirements and resignations, and report of district new hires. I do want to remind the board members to please pull your microphones close to you and speak into those as you are speaking tonight so they can be recorded. Naming the consent agenda, I will be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board approve the agenda, minutes from the December 18, 2023 Board of Education meeting, January committee meeting minutes, district retirement resignation report, report of district new hires, financial reports for December 2023 and January 2024, consideration of current bills, checks number 7542 through 7455, and the amount of $301,611.62. ACH is number 232400573 through 232400714, and the amount of $881,195.73 in wire transfers in the amount of $166,765.38, for a total of $1,349,572.73.
Motion has been made by Jill. Would you like to speak to your motion?
No, thank you.
Is there any discussion on the motion on the floor?
I have...
Dr. Bardo?
Yeah, I have a question. I'm not sure that the check numbers are correct because I always abstain on Kriegerstein Fest. And the check number I wrote down, unless I'm mistaken, was 7619.
7619. I just saw that today, Dave and I'm... And I'll be abstaining. I'm 7619. Thanks. Was it a correction you're making, Michelle? Beginning check number 7542, ending check number, once again? Jill, would you like to amend that motion to correct that last check number, please? Is that okay?
Checks number... Okay, just had it in front of me. 7542?
Yes.
Through 7634.
Yes, correct. And you haven't noted the check number that Dave is abstaining from? Okay. Any other discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing no discussion, the voting device is now open. You may cast your vote. There we go. Ben's got it up. The vote is now open. You may cast your vote. Andy, you want to try one more time? It's Bobby's gun. Okay, would anybody like to change their vote? Okay, the vote is now closed. Ben? And the motion passes. Item number four, administrative reports. Letter A, Director of Business Office. For the administrative reports, I'll be turning this over to our Administrative Superintendent, Mrs. Ogensky.
Okay, for the Director of Business Office, Ms. Fossbender has a report that she will be sharing.
Yes, so this was a auditor's report that was at our Finance Committee meeting. In the past, it's come before the full board. Due to our committee structure and also scheduling conflicts with our auditor, we had to have it at the Finance Committee. So as usual, all of our committees are open to every single board member. Five of our members attended the Finance Committee with our auditor when she gave the report. And this Finance Committee was also open for any school board members to have open conversations, have two-way questions, and have conversations around the audit report during the meeting. In summary, just a little background, district audits are comprehensive financial reviews conducted by an independent auditing firm or a government agency to assess the school district's financial health, compliance with regulations, and then accuracy of finance reporting. So in summary, our audit opinion from our auditor was that the financial statements are fairly stated, and we were issued what is known as a clean audit report. Compliance findings, our report on internal control over compliance did not include deficiencies related to compliance. Still on page one, under the general fund balance, the district's general fund experienced an increase in fund balance of $539,039 for the year ending in June 30th, 2023.
Kelly?
Yep.
Obviously, when we add money to the fund balance, it affects our... the amount of money that we get from the state. So could you explain that to the people?
Sure. The previous administration had put funds, surplus funds, into the general fund account, which then is not aidable. So in that case, they may be doing it for a variety of reasons. But in the case where you put fund balance into the general fund rather than into a fund such as Fund 46, which is also a type of savings account for just simplistic terms, Fund 46 is aidable. So when you put money into Fund 46 for capital improvements, such as anything that's on the 10-year capital improvement plan, which could be parking lots, or it could be windows, it could be any type of capital improvement, those are aidable, which means that the state will still aid you on those things rather than having the tax burden be more on the taxpayers. So in this case, it did not go into Fund 46, which is aidable. It went into the general fund, which is not aidable, meaning our state aid would go down.
Okay, thank you.
Does that also mean that in the future, if you were to take that money out of general fund, that you would be aided on it the following year?
I don't know those... the exact ways that would work. But if you are... whatever you spend in... whatever expenditures you have, generally, you do get state aid on. So if you were... I don't know if you were to spend that $539,000, how that would impact your aid moving forward. That would have to be looked at with projections and within the state aid formula.
It would just be an expenditure.
Yes, but I don't know exactly how that would affect your state aid. So for this year, it affected us negatively, meaning we did not get aid on it, which means more of the pot came from property taxes.
Yeah. But so if we were to go forward with building a new school, in that first year, we would be making a payment and not receiving any aid on it because you don't get aided until the following year. Correct?
I would have to look into all those details exactly of how that would impact. But I can look into that and give that to you.
Okay, I won't go any further with this.
All right. And so in the last piece of the summary, there is a section called difficulties encountered in performing the audit. And the auditors reported that they had no significant difficulties in dealing with management and performing and completing their audit. If you are looking for additional information, which we did go through at our annual budget meeting, there's a summary of financial trends for the district on page six. And then some additional analysis moving forward on fund balance analysis, food service, and long-term capital, which is at Fund 46. Are there any additional questions? I know this is just a brief overview because we went over it in depth in our Finance Committee, but we wanted to make sure we touched base on that at the entire board meeting.
Thank you, Kelly.
You can sit down, Kelly. I just want to go on the record that Kelly, as our Head of Business, wrote a story for the local paper that explained why the taxes did what they did. And WASDA, which is the superintendent's group in the state, took a copy of that, what she wrote, and sent it to all the superintendents around the state. And the principals group also sent it around the state to all the other principals in the state. So Kelly got a lot of recognition, and I wanted to make sure that the public understood that that happened.
Thank you, Kelly, for that.
So up next, we have the Director of Pupil Services and Special Education report attached. Are there questions about that? And Mrs. Burkan is present, if you would like to get answers to any questions you may have. Okay, up next, we have the Director of Curriculum and Instruction report posted. Ms. Studsrim is available, if you have questions. Next, we have the Director of Buildings and Grounds report. Mr. Lighterman is present, if anyone has questions. Okay, and then next is my Superintendent report. The first thing I want to talk about is when we returned, meaning the central office team from Christmas break, we had tons of things spiraling through a Google Doc that we had all been adding of important things, tasks that we wanted to get accomplished this year. So it was quite a daunting list. So we reached out to Dr. Tim and Carla Bublitz, and I'm not sure if I pronounced her name correctly. And they came over and spent half a day with our admin team and helped us to create a 100-day plan, if you will, so that we could prioritize our work and make sure that we had things in alignment and where they needed to happen. So that was a lot of very important work, and it was a very productive meeting, I feel as though it was. The next thing, currently, our students are completing winter benchmark assessments, and those results will be shared out at the February board meeting and at the curriculum committee. Each building principal will report to you what their student achievement is as another form of transparency to our district and community. Our district admin team, which is building principals, and Mark Kautza joined us, and all of the directors. We have been doing a book study over Alan Oden's Improving Student Learning When Budgets Are Tight, which is an evidence-based way to help determine budget cuts when you have a small budget and you need to leverage student achievement as one of your priorities or one of your academic returns of investment. So we spent time... The first assignment was to read the first three chapters. I think in our hour that we got together, we got through two chapters. And the admin teams broke into like groups. The elementary all worked together, the middle school worked together, and the high school worked together. And then the directors each broke off and worked within those groups to look at things that Alan Oden has presented as a prototypical school in comparison to what our school has. And they had to create a chart of what things we have in place, what things are recommended so that we could do a comparison. And we shared out at the end of that. So it's a lot of good work. And it's... When we have ESR cuts to make because it's the end of the grant, we need an evidence-based way of making those decisions that's not subjective, that there is something to prove why we're doing what we're doing. Also, another modality of transparency. The next thing is just a reminder that we do have January 25th as one of our next focus group dates. That will be at the Langley County Senior Center, and it will be at 5:00 PM. So far, I only have one board member that has volunteered to go along for the conversation. So if you would be interested, please send me an email, and I will confirm with a follow-up calendar invite. We have garnered a lot of good information from the two or three that we've already had, so I'm really looking forward to it. And we're getting, I feel, some momentum from the community wanting to be involved and learn more about what things we have going on. Then lastly, we have Dr. Tim present, who is going to speak to us about the potential of working with our district and community around community conversations. Please welcome Dr. Tim.
Well, good to see everybody. Good to be back. Always good to be back in Anago. Thanks for having me join you today. So this work that Glenda has talked to me about doing, I think, is really an extension of the work that you've been engaged in for some time. So you've invested a lot over the years in terms of looking at your facilities and how well do those support your education goals. You've looked a lot at student achievement, and how do you ensure that every student is next level ready? You've looked at how do you engage your community? You've been engaged in some of those discussions I've seen recently. So what we talked about is it's probably a great time with some of the changes that you've made and some of the direction you want to go to really engage the community in a very cohesive form to help shape what the future is going to look like. So I shared with Glenda a plan where we would come together for an evening and a morning and take a look at what is the current status of the district, and then where do you want to go. So we would envision that you would invite representative stakeholders from your staff to different groups in the community, as well as some student representation. Bring together plus or minus 100 people that would come together for a Friday night and a Saturday morning. In the Friday night piece, what we'd want to be looking at doing is focusing on the status of the district again. So you'd have your core areas of the district provide reports on the state of the district, really what's happening financially, what's happening in HR. I know we're all engaged across education in attracting and retaining talent, so what's happening in that realm. You've done a lot of work in terms of your learning goals and your curriculum, so we'd have a report on that as well as facilities. We want it to be an opportunity for the community to be very actively engaged in this. So in between each of those reports, there'd be an opportunity for the community to react and respond to what are they hearing? What are the challenges that they're hearing? What are the opportunities that they're seeing? So that would be what Friday night would look like. Saturday, we would come together, and we would put people in groups, and we would look at what has happened in the world, the nation, the state, the community, and the district over the last six or so decades, and what do we want it to look at, look like in the next three decades? So a lot has changed in Anago. I mean, I remember coming here as a college student and working, and a lot has changed in your community. A lot has changed in your district. And of course, we're seeing that there's more and more attention to education, more pressures putting on education in the broader context of your district and your community. So we want to look at that. And when we look at the past, we're looking at what, again, had been both the challenges and the opportunities. What has happened that we would want to retain that's really strong? And we want to make sure those proud traditions in education and your community are carried forward. And then when we look at some of the changes and the challenges and opportunities, what do we predict it would look like? So once the community helps to shape what are those big priorities on that Saturday morning, then I would come back and work with the board to take those priorities and put those into measurable goals for the board. So the community knows, there's transparency, right? The community has said, this is what we want to see happen in our community. You finalize those, put those into your goals. And when Glenda and the team come and bring recommendations, you can be measuring your decision-making against what you heard from your community. So really helping everybody to understand where you're going as a direction, be able to see some accountability for that, but also everybody be able to come together and align resources and efforts to that. So you can see, I think Glenda shared this with you, but the objectives that I've laid out really talk a lot about stakeholder engagement. So this is an opportunity to be very strategic, make sure we're hearing from parents, students, business partners, people who have no children in the school anymore or not yet, people who have long supported the school, people who have had questions, your local government leaders, but to get a really big cross-section of people to come together. That historical perspective, you have a lot of newness on your team here, but there's a lot of people that are deeply rooted in the community. How do we bring those perspectives together? Collective visioning. So this isn't, you know, figuring out the vision and the focus for this school district isn't just on the shoulders of the elected board members, but let's get those voices of the community together, help prioritize those goals. Again, down the road, when somebody says, why did you prioritize this over that? You can look and say, here's what we heard from our community. And generally, what districts will do is come back together for it abbreviated every three years and revisit these so that you keep them current. Inclusive discussions, again, all of those voices in the community coming together. You know, you are representative for a reason, but then the community has even, you know, a broader insight and skill set and interest and desire. So it's an opportunity to bring all of those together. Relationship building, getting to know people, right? It's really hard in this setting. People come and talk to you. You can't really talk to them. So it's an opportunity when people will be able to talk to each other and not at each other. And I think that's an important part of building some relationships. Again, these actionable insights, it gives the board a clear direction. What are we, you know, what are we trying to achieve? And then what are the important pillars that we're going to commit to that are going to help us get where we want to go? Again, the community has helped shape that. And then some post-event communication. So once we've decided this, it's something that, as the administrative team brings the recommendation, they can say, this is in support of the following goal, which is part of your action plan. The community can follow it on your agenda. They can hear it in your meetings. Just helps everybody to track together. So again, you've done some really good work, I think, in focusing on your student achievement in the last half dozen or so years that I've known your board and your school community. Done a lot on your facilities. But let's bring... done a lot on your facilities, but let's bring those together, and then let's look at what else do we want to focus on so that we can say, every child from the time they enter as four cares until they leave or go across the stage and get their diploma, we can ensure and say with confidence that they are next level ready. So it would be brief, it'd be a Friday night, a couple hours on a Friday night, I think they had this, 6:00 to 8:30 on a Friday night, and then 8:00 to noon on a Saturday morning, so it would be a pretty good pace, but it'll be very interactive, people will be talking with each other, working with each other, and at the end, they'll leave the board with some actionable ideas to turn into your strategy.
Go ahead, Angie.
And you could do a public all-call for, you can do it how you want, but then you'd want to make sure that you're within your, you know, you want to make sure you have some parents, so if parents didn't sign up, you'd want to be able to go and say, you know, at each level, who are some parents that we could tap to be involved? If no students signed up, who are some students that we would want to tap to be involved? Local government, every group, you know, and I would expect your administrative team would generate a list of what are all those different entities that we should make sure, do we have service organizations, do we have business partners? And again, look then, when the people volunteer, do we have representation from all of those areas that in the end, you can truly say it has really been an inclusive effort to get the other voices to the table?
Angie, that'd be a great place for the Donovan group to step up, and we could use them and their services to help initiate this, along with our administrative team working with them and social media, of course.
Yeah, I just think it's one of those things, you guys are pulled in a lot of different directions, right? There's a lot of priorities, as Glenda was saying, when I met with the team, they had a lot of priorities. This helps give you the direction from your community, these are the most important ones to us. Even those are the only things you focus on, but you want to make sure that when you're exercising your decision-making, that you're accounting for those.
It sounds like a great plan.
I've been part of it myself as an educator many years ago, and I would tell you, it served a very divided district very, very well, and they've continued that work twelve years later.
Thank you for showing up tonight.
Yeah, thank you for your work, and welcome back to the district.
Yeah, thank you.
Looking forward to seeing where this goes.
Look forward to working with you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number five, letter A, Board Action, Antigo Area Recreation Foundation Letter of Support, I would be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board to approve the letter of support as presented.
Motion has been made by Jill, would you like to speak to your motion, please?
I would like to hand it over, maybe your superintendent to speak on?
It would be Mr. Leiderman, he's been working with this group.
Thank you, wasn't sure.
Jake, just give us an overview of what this is telling us, of what the letter is actually the purpose of.
So the, there's a nonprofit organization, there's actually two of them within Langley County, that are trying to mainly find solutions for pickleball right now, but I could see that possibly turning into other sports, athletic, fitness-type facilities. They're trying to write some grants to get something started on this, so they're asking specific community members, us being one of them, city's another one, to just give a letter of support that they can include in their grant application. This doesn't mean that we're signing on to allow any specific project or any specific location, you know, we've talked about a number of possibilities, whether it's on city property, school property, who knows? Those decisions are yet to be made, and we'll obviously present on that as we go, but right now, this is just saying that we support the idea, that it's good for our community, and we want to provide this letter so that it goes into the grant application, and it helps them.
Okay, any questions for Jake, as he's at the podium? All right, hearing no questions, Ben, do we have the voting device ready? And we have Colleen locked in. The back door is locked. Okay, the vote is open, you may vote. Would anybody like to change their vote? Seeing none, the vote is now closed, Ben. And the motion passes. Item letter B, consideration to approve new course proposal, I would be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board to approve the new course proposal for the lifeguard training as presented.
Motion has been made by Kristen, would you like to speak to your motion, please?
I think it's great anytime we can provide more opportunities for our kids, especially when they're helping the community.
All right, any discussion on the motion on the floor?
I just want to say that at the committee level, we talked about, they talked about who's possibly having credit for help or applying.
Amy, you want to come and speak about that credit? I do recall that conversation, please.
So that question was asked at the committee, so we're still looking into it, the YMCA person was supposed to come here but had another conflict, so wasn't able to come. But we're trying to follow what other schools do with the YMCA and other districts and how they align, so we're hoping and we think that we can get it with maybe a FIAD, not health, but a FIAD, credit, like a .5 elective credit, that would fall under the requirements for what students need to graduate in, under the FIAD department. I also looked into that, somebody asked about the CPR certifications, if students could do that, and we do think that they can, but it would require eight hours of instruction and time and some online learning in order to receive that CPR certification, so it wouldn't stretch out over a semester, so we're going to try to see, it wouldn't be an elective course or anything like that, but students would possibly be able to get their CPR certification if they needed that for their nursing program or some other program. I know some people do it, they're babysitters, they want to make sure they have that certification. So we're working through that and seeing if we can offer it as part of our health unit. So the CPR would be part of another health class that you could get your certification in. So it's going to take a little bit of like moving around some pieces in some of those course offerings and seeing who would be trained, but we do have that lifeguard instructor through the YMCA who would do the actual class. I know that was a question in the community of who is certified on our staff to teach that, and I mean, I'm not going to speak for them, there might be somebody out there, but they actually provide their own YMCA instructor, and we're just trying to figure out the logistics of what that looked like if this is passed by the board tonight, and how we can make sure that kids are safe as they go to the Aquatic Center and complete that credit.
Amy, is it possible that should this motion pass, go through the board tonight, that you can give us updates as you are updated in the future?
Yep, absolutely. And we have to figure out grading as well, so I know some districts do it on participation, so it's just a participation grade, they either completed or they don't complete it because you can't go through half lifeguarding and then be considered a lifeguard, that's not safe.
It's not safe if you're halfway.
Yeah, so you're either all in or all out at this point for that, but we're going to make sure that they can get credit for it as an elective class.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, the motion on the floor is to approve this new course proposal, the voting device is now open. Would anybody like to change their vote? Seeing no one move, the vote is now closed, Ben. And this motion passes. Item letter C, WASB Delegate Assembly Resolutions Discussion 4.635, I would be looking for a motion, please. Once again, I'll look for a motion on the WASB Delegate Assembly Resolutions Discussion 4.635.
I move the board to approve the WASB Delegate Assembly Resolutions for item 4635 as stated.
Motion has been made by Jill, would you like to speak to that motion, please?
So this is the same as what we initially talked about?
Yes, last month.
Okay, so I was in opposition to this one, which is, why I made the motion to clarify what the motion is and possibly amend or discuss further. But I still am in opposition, not because mental health needs are not an identified need within our district and others, but just simply concerns with districts employing clinical counselors as district employees. My recommendation would be to continue to contract out those services so they're still provided within the district, but not as an employee of the district.
Okay, so you are offering up that when Bobby is on the floor this week at the convention, that she is to vote in the negative for this?
Yes.
Okay. The motion on the floor is that we approve what is stated, so if this fails in the vote, then Bobby will speak in the negative toward this. If this passes, then Bobby will speak in the positive toward this. Is there any other discussion on the motion on the floor, and that is to approve this for the WASB delegate this week? Andy?
I think just a point of order, if we, if this motion fails, it would be appropriate to have a new motion to oppose it.
Could be, would you like to offer a new motion to oppose what is written?
Just saying, defeating this motion, does that mean that you should?
Okay, in that case, I'll make a motion to make a new motion that says, I move the board disapprove the WASB Delegate Assembly Resolutions for item 4.635 as stated, so instead of approve, it's disapprove.
So you're amending?
Okay, so you're amending the motion that's currently on the floor.
Correct. So we'll have two votes anyway.
So the motion now that is on the floor is to disapprove, I move the board disapprove the WASB Delegate Assembly Resolution for item 4.635 as stated. All of our conversation needs to be directed to, the motion on the floor is to disapprove this 4.635 that is stated. Any other discussion? Does everybody understand what you're voting for when the vote is open? Catherine? Okay. All right, the vote is now open to move that the board disapprove the WASB Delegate Assembly Resolution for item 4.635 as stated. Would anybody like to change their vote? Seeing no one move, Ben? And the vote carries. So now the main motion is that I move the board disapprove the WASB Delegate Assembly Resolution for item 4.635 as stated. Any further discussion? It'll be left up to this board, as of right now, Bobby will just vote no on item 4.635 and offer no resolution, unless this board has a resolution to offer tonight. And I'll see to it that Bobby gets this information at the convention. Any other further discussion? Okay, the voting is now open to, yes ma'am? Okay, the motion is, I move the board disapprove the WASB Delegate Assembly Resolution for item 4.635 as stated. A yes vote would be, yes, you're in favor of disapproving this, a no vote means that you are in favor of approving this. Did I state that correctly? Yes. The vote is now open.
No, that just confused me.
No, a yes vote, the motion on the floor will disapprove.
It's the same thing as the other motion that I made.
Yes.
Okay, Ben, are you ready? Is all the members ready? Okay, the vote is now open. Would anybody like to change their vote? Okay, Ben, the vote is now closed. And the motion carries. I will get that information to Bobby at the convention. Item D, open enrollment special education seats for 2024-2025 school year, I will be looking for a motion.
I move the board to approve the recommendations to accept two seats in an early childhood program due to caseload numbers and the ability to handle additional students in special education.
Motion has been made by Jill, would you like to speak to your motion?
I would like to share that this was brought to committee as well, and I'd like to offer or ask Ms. Burkin to come down to speak to this because I know she put a lot of work into this recommendation, and I want to provide that opportunity for her to share it.
Thank you, Ms. Burkin, if you'll please come down.
Hello. So looking through the caseload numbers that we have this year, comparing them to previous years, and taking careful consideration to not just the numbers, but also the disability-related categories as well as staffing, we are recommending that the seats and spaces are only going to be open, the two for early childhood. We have the same amount of students hired on some caseloads, but overall, we are serving with less staff this year overall across the district. So that's pretty much where the recommendation came from.
As we hear this every year in January for the next school year. Are there any questions for Mrs. Burkin?
Our goal is that by attracting highly qualified staff in special education, that next year, when the recommendation is made to the board, we can offer seats for all students of all ages, yep.
Yeah, because nothing replaces that highly qualified teacher.
Any other discussion, questions? Okay, hearing none, Ben, if you will open the voting device, it's now open, you're in favor of the motion on the floor? Would anybody like to change their vote? Seeing none, the vote is now closed, Ben. And the motion carries. Item letter E, consideration to approve land contract proposal, I would be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board to approve the land contract offer to purchase as presented in an amount not to exceed $398,297.91.
Motion has been made by Dr. Bardo, would you like to speak to your motion, please, sir?
I guess what I'd like to say is that if this land had been purchased 10 or 20 years ago, they should have done it, and we need to do this as we move our district forward.
Okay, the motion on the floor is where we need to direct all of our discussion, is there any discussion from the board? Any questions? Yes, Angie, go ahead.
So I passed out this paper that talks about comparable land sales, Mrs. Burkin.
Does everybody have that paper that Angie passed out? It may have been sitting at your.
So this talks to, shows comparable agricultural sales in the last year, and I just want to point out, if you were to look on three lines down, acre price per acre, right, that's substantially less than what our agreement is in this contract. And I just want to have Jake speak to not only what you said, Dave, about land prices going up, obviously from, you know, 10, 15 years ago, and this is going to continue to go up, but also why we should be okay with paying more per acre, because I think we owe that to the public, especially seeing as everybody just got their tax bills, and I was just as shocked as everybody, not mine, I was not anticipating that at all. And so now I feel like we should be able to answer why, why we're going to be doing this and paying more money than what the average land price is per acre. So Jake, if you could speak to that. So Jake, if you could speak to that?
Five dollars, two hundred and five per acre, and that's the second lowest one there. Yeah, so um, you know, I don't know the exact properties that, that you have on there, but um, one thing that is different right off the, off the get-go is having the R2 status, which is residential status, is going to change that a little bit. Um, currently this land is being used for agriculture. So I understand why you compared it that way, right?
Yep.
Secondly, when we did our appraisal back in last April through a commercial appraisal company, they looked at it as what it was, so residential, used as agriculture right now. When they did those comparables, they've, the, the most comparable three properties, both in size, um, land type and um, accessibility was a big, a big one in there. They came up with three different properties, um, the highest of which was ninety-nine hundred dollars an acre. Um, when they corrected that and did their overall appraisal, they came back with sixty-two hundred that I shared with you guys um, I believe in April or May last year. As you start to think about the value of location, that's where this, this land really separates itself from any comparable that you're going to find. This land attaches to our property and that really opens up a lot of possibilities when you look at a campus theory and structure on efficiencies that I think, you know, we could easily justify the, the increased cost that we are going to save that multiple, multiple times over, over the next fifty, hundred years. Um, being able to offer the same services through, you know, just one example, like food service. You know, we have a, a huge production kitchen that we can, we can use a lot more than we are right now. Transportation, athletic facilities, um, the aquatic center that's here. There, there's just multiple, multiple ways that we will see these efficiencies pay that difference back many, many times.
Shared staffing.
Shared staffing. Now, obviously that doesn't mean that we should just say, yeah, let's take those efficiencies and then pass it on to someone else. But at the same time, those, those landowners know that, right? And this is now the, I believe, fourth time that we've gone back to them to negotiate this. And when we look through those previous negotiations, you know, that's really what drove where we started this negotiation and why we ended up where we did. And, you know, we went through those pretty extensively, so I won't go through all the details. But um, we went back quite, quite a few times back and forth. And, and I, I think that um, even though that it is a higher than average agriculture price right now, I think that the efficiencies greatly increase the value of this land to us.
Jake, could you just uh, for the public's benefit, uh, tell us how many acres this is and what price per acre that translates into?
It's thirty-six and a half acres. The price per acre is based off a ten thousand dollar purchase price, ten thousand dollars per acre purchase price. The amount specifically cited in the, the motion covers the, the land contract finance fees for, for the five years.
Can you just clarify when you talk about um, we've, we've gone back and forth in the four different times? Are you speak, can you clarify this board has done that or historically over the course of years, the district and the property owner have been in discussions?
Correct. Uh, yeah, the, the earliest one I think was um, around two thousand thirteen, I believe. Is the, the one that comes to mind. I don't have that at all in front of me, sorry. But yeah, it's been between the district and these landowners, which have owned it for many generations. Um, and every time that we go to run a referendum, we sit down, negotiate, and it was always a, uh, offer contingent upon the passage of the, of the referendum. Um, you know, to speak to, to Mr. Bardo's point, had we bought that land the first time we made this negotiation, we'd all be really happy right now. So unfortunately didn't at that time. Um, so I think that it's important that we, we take this step and set this district up to excel in this community, to excel in the future.
What you're saying in summary is the last offer, the last option was pretty high, higher than they value. So we had to, we had to go lower than we were.
Correct. Yeah, I think even in thirteen and sixteen, that, that offer was um, a lot closer to what we were offering now than what those comparable values were.
And uh, just for the public's benefit, the land contract, could you just explain a little bit how many years that's for and about what the per year will be?
Yeah, so we are structuring this with a hundred and fifty thousand dollar down payment. So upon closing, we pay a hundred and fifty thousand dollars down. Then over the next five years, we pay fifty thousand dollars a year roughly, ballparking those numbers.
What's the interest rate?
Five percent, which right now, I think if you go to a bank, you're going to be looking at seven, eight percent.
I just want to point out that we cannot prepay, this has a trade-off. You have to get permission from the seller to make any kind of prepayment.
Correct. In the discussions that I had with the, with the owners, um, obviously that they are interested in doing a land contract because it helps them financially through, through the tax, their tax impacts. So yeah, we would not, they would not want to receive this money any sooner, otherwise we would have structured it that way.
Any other questions for Jake, as he is at the podium?
I don't have a question, I just have a statement. It's always difficult to make large purchases. Land is something that you can't create. Um, and I appreciate the seller's willingness to stay with the district over the course of many years um, and provide us this opportunity to purchase. And although the price goes up and it's a, it's a big chunk of money, um, the location and the value that it provides, and if we do nothing with it, we, we can sell land. Um, so I'm just really appreciative to the seller, to the district's diligence to maintain those communications. Um, and I appreciate that we're in a position to make an offer at this point, instead of losing that opportunity to purchase.
To piggyback on what you said for the seller's appreciation, and I do appreciate their willingness to work with us yet again. Uh, Jake also put numerous hours in this conversation with them back and forth over several months to years. Yeah, and uh, so thank you so much for all of your hard work in this too. Any other questions or statements? Okay, Ben, uh, the vote is now open. Would anybody like to change their vote? Okay, the vote is now closed, Ben. And the motion passes. Item number six, new business, transportation, Shepherd's Watch Christian Academy. Um, I will let Mrs. Ojenski speak about this. Mr. Leidemann, sorry. I, I'm sorry, we should have just kept you up here. You are over transportation, so I'll let you speak to uh, Shepherd's Watch Christian Academy. And we do have a representative from Shepherd's Watch here tonight as well.
Okay, so attached uh, there's first uh, there's kind of a letter that uh, is from the Shepherd's Watch Christian Academy that's in Mattoon. Um, asked, formally asking for transportation for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Um, that's particularly important because based on statute through DPI, we have to receive formal request for transportation by April first. So um, obviously much ahead of the schedule, which is greatly appreciated, helps us get everything in line. Um, secondly, there's a map that shows the attendance boundary that they've requested. Um, this is where I kind of get a little bit more uh, into having questions and answers. Um, I'm working with DPI along with Shepherd's Watch. And uh, the Bowler School District is in the same situation. So we're, we're trying to figure out all the ins and outs to this, and I just don't have all that clarified yet. Um, you know, I always need to look from the district's point of view, what's the worst case scenario? How this could happen, you know, if we have a, a student in Gleason that ends up wanting to go, how, how is that all going to play out? And I need to give you guys that information before you can make an educated decision. So I'm still working on that, but like I said, I have a lot more questions than answers right now. But um, I wanted to let you guys know that this is coming for approval. Um, I will keep working on it, working with uh, Shepherd's Watch to get the right solution for our students. But I just don't have all the answers right now, but I wanted to give you heads up on this.
So right now, this is, this is here for information only. So board members, if you want to ask any questions of Jake that he can uh, look at and he can find the answers for, uh, we currently do offer bus transportation for the other two parochial schools, Peace Lutheran as well as All Saints, correct?
Correct.
As, as our buses are on their current routes, they go through and pick up those students?
Correct.
Do they drop those students off at those respective schools, Peace Lutheran and All Saints?
Yes.
Okay. So the bus routes would then, if this would be the case, then the buses would continue to pick up the same students and then drop them off in Mattoon at the Christian Academy?
Right, and that's, that's where my list of questions really starts. On how logistically that's going to look and take place.
Okay.
And specifically two-minute requirements for both their students and ours, and how to make those routes as efficient as possible and what options we have to do that.
Exactly.
So we're not required to make new routes specifically for their school? If we so choose, we can just use the routes we have and then those kids can transfer at the transfer point and go to the Mattoon school? Is that correct?
I, I believe that to be correct. Um, there are, there are a couple of options that they do lay out. One of them would be like paying a parent to transport. We could look at those options. So what I'm trying to do is find out every possibility that we have and what would be not only the most cost-effective, but the most effective on our students as well, so that they get the appropriate number of minutes of education, but the shortest amount of time being transported to and from. So I'm trying to figure out all the options that that allows.
And in that map, they included some area in the Wittenburg Burnhamwood District and the Bowler District, but we're not responsible for that, are we?
No, we are not.
Those two respective districts would be responsible for that, correct?
That's my understanding at this point.
Um, okay. Can you clarify that? Because um, my thought is that those districts aren't responsible because that school is not in their boundaries.
Right, and that's, like I said, that, that's my understanding initially, but that's one thing that I do want to clarify before we take any action on approving a map. I want to understand what that all entails for us. Because the district or the, the school's location is within five miles of the Bowler School District. That's the statutory reasoning that they can't pull from that attendance area.
What'd you say, can or can?
Can. Because yes, that's a concern of mine too.
Yeah, they're not within five miles of the Burnhamwood School, are they?
They're five point five miles from there. So I think Wittenburg Burnhamwood District was able to um, not have to provide transportation. Again, these are, I'll confirm all these answers, but I'm kind of putting it together as we go over here, so.
Like five years ago, we had a lot of conversations about bus lengths and we looked at the times for all of them. I can't remember, do we have a formal policy or do we just have a guideline that we were trying to keep it under an hour if we could?
To my knowledge, there's not a policy, it's a guideline. But yes, you're accurate.
Right, I just didn't know if we had that. We were sending one bus down there and they're transferring, it's obviously not going to be that.
Right.
Do we have a idea of number of students?
Not yet. Um, the, it, so they're required to give us the attendance boundary map by April first. And then by May fifteenth, they're required to give us their best guess at the students that will attend there. Now, obviously, like we experience every year, you're going to have kids enrolling up to the fir- first day of school and then throughout the year as well. So I mean, that, that could always change. That's why I'm really worried about trying to find every possibility, like the example I brought up with Gleason. You know, what if a kid decides that mid-year he wants to go from Gleason to Mattoon? What does that look like for us? That's quite a ways.
Um, do we know how many students they have this year? Mr. Bardo, could you answer that, I'm sure?
Twenty total or twenty and a, twenty pluses? Oh, I know that, sorry, yes, yes. Yes.
What's your grade range again, to start?
Jake, my, the only thing I would give you his advice is that uh, check with DPI and make sure that uh, they give you all the information so that you're following that, so we do everything correctly. And just a reminder, when I was superintendent at Wittenburg Burnhamwood and, and all the, there was a group of Anawa students who wanted, their parents wanted them to come to Whitburn, and we allowed that open enrollment, but we made it very clear that we would not pick them up in the Anago District. They had to provide their, get their kids to our drop-off points. And so um, my understanding would be that possibly their students that live in the Whitburn area would have to come to our district and be at a drop or drop-off or drop-in point to get to Mattoon. So.
Thank you, Jake, for that information. Uh, any other questions or, or comments that you can, if you think of any related to this, you can always email uh, Jake as well as Mrs. Ojenski, so uh, they can get this forward. When do we expect that we would have to vote on something, Jake? Do you know, is it?
I'm, I'm going to bring an update back at the February Buildings and Grounds Committee.
Okay.
Um, and if it's appropriate at that time, then we'll pull it forward to the board to vote on at the end of February.
Okay.
Um, but like I said, I really appreciate them submitting this early so that we have enough time. Because we, you know, I, I don't want to wait till April. I'd like to get it done by March at the latest.
Do we actually have to vote on it? Do you have to do it by statute?
We, we have to approve or accept the attendance boundary.
Blessing plan, I think, is what we really need to approve.
Right. Yes, that's early for them, though. We have to approve their attendance boundary map. But I will include the blessing plan as well.
Yeah, I agree. I appreciate the early communication. Thank you.
Jake, just one more question or thing that I would like you to check out is um, Mr. Bardo said that if kids came to their drop-off point, they would pick them up. But this isn't our school. this isn't our school, so, um, are, are we going to be required to pick up Wittenberg-Burnhamwood kids to take them to Shepherd's Watch? And this is a question for DPI.
Sure.
Right, correct. Okay, thank you, Jake. Uh, we'll look forward to discussing this at the Building Grounds Committee, uh, next month. Okay, item number seven, closed session. Consideration of a motion to adjourn in closed session pursuant to Section 19.851(c) of the Wisconsin statutes for the purpose of considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any employ, public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, including discussion of possible non-renewal of employment contracts, and discussion of employment status of district employee. I will be looking for a motion, please. Motion's been made by Angie. Would you like to speak to that motion? Any discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing no discussion. Michelle, could we have a roll call vote, please, for the motion on the floor of going into closed session?
Maddick Nelson?
Yes.
Jill Maddick Nelson?
Yes.
Kristen Mattmiller?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Angie Schreiber?
Yes.
Katie Schrader?
Yes.
Catherine Solan?
Yes.
Annie Pyatt?
Yes.
Dr. Dave Bardo?
Yes. And we are now in closed session. We'll take just a moment, uh, br- Okay, action as of, uh, closed session was, we had discussion of personnel matters in closed session. We also did the superintendent's evaluation, and, uh, we'll be delivering the superintendent's, uh, evaluation to her tomorrow to her office. Motion to adjourn by Angie. All in favor of adjournment, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, let it be known by saying aye. Then this meeting is adjourned.